I'll call this meeting to order. If you'd please bow your heads with us for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we have three sets of meetings to approve October 9, October 23, and November 1. Have a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0. We're going to move into resolutions. And Commissioner Isnardi, ma'am.
Hi, can I have Mrs. Blair and Deputy Sheriff Gutaboe?
Yes.
And Mr. Cashey. Cashey, I'm sorry. Come on up. I'm just going to read a little short explanation, and I'm going to read the resolution, and then let Mr. Cashey take over and read a few words. I'll read the resolution first. Whereas on October 15, 2017, 65-year-old Delbert Blair made the ultimate sacrifice to save the life of a stranger who was caught in a riptide at Spencer Holland Beach Park in Melbourne Beach. And whereas Blair, who was visiting the beach with his family that day, heard the man's calls for help and without hesitation ran into the ocean and pushed him to shore. And whereas sadly Blair was unable to escape the pounding surf after rescuing the man that drowned. And despite the efforts of Brevard County Deputy Sheriff Kent Gutaboe, who carried Blair ashore so paramedics could begin CPR. And whereas Blair, a native of West Virginia, left behind his wife of 45 years, Deborah Blair, three children, five grandchildren, and many other friends and family that loved him dearly. And whereas Blair's heroic actions have been honored with the award of the Purple Heart from the Space Coast Public Service Awards and Hall of Fame, and the Carnegie Medal from the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission. And I should also mention, he was a pastor as well. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby unanimously recognize and commend Delbert Blair for knowing the dangers of the riptides, but placing himself in harm's way despite the risks and sacrificing his life to save another. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 13th day of November AD 2018. And I want to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
Established on April 15, 1904 by Andrew Carnegie, the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission was created to recognize outstanding acts of selfless heroism performed in the United States and Canada. The commission awards the Carnegie Medal to those who risked their lives to an extraordinary degree while saving or attempting to save the lives of others throughout the United States and Canada. Delbert Blair is one of only 10,044 heroes awarded this medal since the Pittsburgh-based fund's inception in 1904. Mr. Cashey?
You pretty well covered the Carnegie Foundation. For those that did not know, this came about because in 1904 there was a massive coal mine explosion that he was made aware of, and 181 people were killed in that explosion. But two of them were people that went in after the explosion trying to rescue and save the 179 others that were inside. And because of that, it prompted Mr. Carnegie to establish the commission and to recognize acts of heroism, and to take care of the families of those that may perish, and to recognize the heroes that did not perish. And on the back of the medal, you will see his favorite Bible verse from the New Testament which says, "Greater hath no man than this, that the man lay down his life for his friend." John 15:13. He believed in that sincerely. He carried that thought through everything that he did the rest of his life. And Ms. Blair, your husband exemplified that love when that day that he went into the ocean and risked his life. And it is my honor to welcome you to the Carnegie family.
Thank you very much.
And with that. Very appreciative of the sacrifice.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all so very much. He was a wonderful man, and he would do anything for anybody. He was always there for me and my kids, but regardless, you know, he would go. If someone called and said there was a need, he went. And he wouldn't want any of this, you know? He was just a very humble man that was just who he was. And but I am very honored by all of you guys recognizing him in such a fantastic way, you know? I'm humbled, and I just want to live a life as he lived his. And I would encourage all of you guys to search deep within yourselves, because as the scripture says, you know, "No greater love hath a man than he who would lay down his life for a friend." And we all have friends, but would you lay down your life for them? Hmm, yeah, that is right. So thank you all so much. I want to thank you, my beloved friend, you know, friends forever.
Yes.
And I want to thank my people from my church and friends, my should-be-sister. And I want to thank all of you guys for what you do each and every day. You know, it's not easy doing what you do, but you're in my prayers every day, each one of you. Each one of you. God bless.
God bless you.
I think you guys are coming up for this, right?
Do you need some help, or are you?
You want me just to go?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. The next resolution is going to be recognizing Alpha-1 Awareness Month. And you can speak a little bit after I'm done reading the resolution if you like.
Sure.
I knew what this was, but it's only because of my nursing background, so not that many people do, though I agree.
You're right.
Okay, resolution. Whereas Alpha-1 anti-tripsin deficiency, or known as Alpha-1, is one of the most common and serious hereditary disorders in the world, and can result in life-threatening lung disease in adults and liver disease in both children and adults. And whereas Alpha-1 has been identified in nearly all populations and ethnic groups, it is estimated that about one in every 2,500 Americans have Alpha-1, and up to 6% of Caucasians in the U.S. carry a single deficient gene and may pass the gene on to their children. And whereas Alpha-1 is widely underdiagnosed and misdiagnosed, and fewer than 10% of those predicted to have Alpha-1 have been diagnosed, and it often takes an average of five doctors and seven years from the time symptoms appear before proper diagnosis is made, which can be done using a simple blood test. And whereas it is important to increase awareness and detection of the serious hereditary and misdiagnosed disorder, and whereas during the month of November, a nationwide awareness campaign will take place throughout the country to educate the public as well as the medical community on Alpha-1 detection and treatment for those affected by this condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of November 2018 as Alpha-1 Awareness Month to bring awareness, education, and support to those who are affected by Alpha-1 in Brevard County and throughout the world. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 13th day of November AD 2018. I want to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0.
I'd like to thank you for allowing us to present Alpha-1 anti-tripsin deficiency to everybody. I personally have Alpha-1. I was experiencing symptoms for over 23 years, but nobody could tell me until six years ago that I had Alpha-1 anti-tripsin deficiency. If I had known then what I know now, I could have probably had weekly infusions and saved my own lungs. Three years ago, I was placed and told that I was in end-stage lung disease. I went on a transplant list, and last year, a precious donor gave me a beautiful set of lungs, and I'm here today and want to spread Alpha-1 awareness to others. Thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
All righty. Hunter? I'm going to read this resolution, and then if you have something to say, you can, and we'll do some pictures. Thank you for being here. Whereas among American men, prostate cancer is both the second most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths. And whereas although prostate cancer incidence and mortality rates have declined over the past two decades, in 2019 alone, an estimated 164,690 men in the United States will be diagnosed with the illness, and almost 29,400 of those will die. Whereas during National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, we remember those lost to prostate cancer offer our support to patients and their families, and highlight our commitment to better prevention, detection, and treatment methods. And whereas the goal of No Shave November is to raise awareness by embracing our hair, which many cancer patients lose, and letting it grow. Instead of using the money on shaving and grooming, men are encouraged to donate it to cancer research and education in order to save lives and aid those fighting the battle. And whereas the District 4 Commission Office has indicated a desire to help support the treatment and awareness of prostate and testicular cancer by promoting a program entitled, "No Shave November." Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim November 2018 as No Shave November in Brevard County, and supports research, awareness, and treatment of prostate and testicular cancer. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 13th day of November 2018. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0.
On behalf of the American Cancer Society, I would personally like to thank you for proclaiming this as No Shave November. One of the most obvious signs of a battle with cancer is the loss of one's hair due to the harsh treatments of chemotherapy and radiation. During No Shave November, we really embrace our hair, really in support of those who have lost it. I encourage all men and women, if they choose, to learn more about cancer and join me in this month-long journey of not shaving in support of those who've lost their hair due to cancer. I also invite them to make their beards and mustaches even more meaningful through a program called Grow Nation. It allows men and women, men to use their beard to fight cancer by providing money for lifesaving cancer research and patient support programs through the American Cancer Society. Start by donating, like you said, the amount that you would use to buy your razors and shaving creams that month, and then go from there. Our local ACS staff is more than happy to help, and our website, cancer.org, has tons of information as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
We have one more presentation here that we didn't have marked, but we had elections this week, and we actually have one of our commissioners that's going to be leaving him, us, by his choice. He didn't lose, so we know he would have won. But anyways, Commissioner Barfield, we have a plaque that we'd like to present you with, and if y'all wouldn't mind, we'll all go down with the plaque we want to give you and have a photo done with you. But it's just from, I would like to say, it's just been a wonderful honor to work with you. I've learned a lot from you. You're such a smart person, and you really care about the community, and sir, it's just been an honor to work with you these last couple of years.
Thank you. I just have to say, it's been truly an honor to be able to serve our community, and I wouldn't have traded it for anything. It's just been, it's been ups and downs of it, but it's been a pleasure to serve, it's been a pleasure to do this. Those who know me know this is outside of my comfort zone. I'm in business, and sometimes you have to listen to the call that you're supposed to do, even when God tells you you're going to do this, you just have to say okay. And I did, and I haven't regretted one moment of it. So I just want to thank y'all, everyone on this commission. It's been an honor working with y'all. Y'all, I have the utmost respect for y'all, because I know what you're going through. And I guess what I need to say the most is, I want to thank my wife, who's sitting back there right now, because she has been behind me the whole time with this, and she supports me on this. She has to come to meetings, because I'd go to a meeting and go home, and after a five-hour, six-hour meeting, she'd say, "What happened?" And I'd give her the two-minute version. The problem is, the next day, she'd read the newspaper, and she'd say, "Well, you didn't say anything about this, you didn't say anything about that." So I said, "It's best that you just, well, come to the meeting." So she has. And another little funny there, every now and then I'll get the "aye" from her, like I'm kind of getting right now. She can tell when I'm about to, how can I say it? Say something I shouldn't say, or lose my temper a little bit, and she gives me the look. Now, she gives me the look one time, then she gives me another look. The second look is like this. The next one is like that. And I just look at her and smile and do it anyway. So, but thank you, thank you for everything. I truly enjoyed this. But I have to give one more thank you, and it's for my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He has worked me through this, calmness in storms, things go bad, people say bad things, but somehow He's led me through this. And I truly, I truly am thankful to Him, and I'm thankful to the community for all they've done. So thank you.
Hey, we're going to be like able to talk now. Okay, we're going to move into consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have anything that you would like to hear polled and heard separately? Oh, Commissioner Tobias, you're trying to push your button, and we forgot to turn it on. No, it's us. Yes, sir?
F-13, Madam Chair.
F-13. Is that the only one, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, wonderful. Can I have a motion to pass the other items? Motion by Commissioner Smith, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0. We will go ahead and move to item F-13. And I do have one card here. Mr. Malik, you're the Cocoa Beach Mayor, of course, sir, so, oops, I have two of them. Commissioner Tobias, would you like to open the meeting up with staff, or sir, did you want to address it before we got started?
Rather than address.
You got it. Staff. Yes, this is our request for authorization and approve the design and the renovation for Lori Wilson Park, to go out for RFQ. Okay, I will go ahead and, Mrs. Carolyn Woolis? Are you here, ma'am? Did you want to come and address the board, or you just wanted to do questions, or?
Good evening. As one of the Cocoa Beach City Commissioners, I would like to express the importance of the execution of the design-build-renovation project for Lori Wilson Park. As it stands now, Lori Wilson Park is currently being maintained at a minimum level that is just enough to keep it functioning. The current conditions of the boardwalk structures, its grounds, and its facilities are in disrepair to the point that it is almost dangerous to current and future beachgoers. We also realize the strain that the maintenance of this park has on the county budget. Under this design-build-renovation plan that would fall under the policies of the Brevard County Beachfront Parks Enterprise Plan, Lori Wilson Park would be made significantly more attractive and functional to beachgoers from everywhere, including Cocoa Beach, the rest of the county, and out-of-county visitors. It would be maintained at the expense of out-of-county visitors' parking revenue, which in turn would alleviate maintenance costs from county budget, and would attract even more beachgoers to the park, and in fact, increase sales tax revenue for the county, which would then increase contributions to the half-cent lagoon sales tax initiative, generating more funds to help save the lagoon. I consider this renovation project for Lori Wilson Park to be the best investment these TDC funds can provide, since it benefits multiple initiatives of our county, including beach beautification, attracting more visitors, generating more sales tax revenue to benefit the county and the lagoon, and alleviate the county budget for maintenance costs for Lori Wilson Park. Please consider moving forward with this project. On behalf of Cocoa Beach, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Ben Malik?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. You forgot to say, "Go Gators," Jim.
It's all right.
Kudos to moving this forward. As you probably know, Cocoa Beach generates over 50% of the bed tax. We are the goose that lays the golden egg. Unfortunately, our residents and our community sees very little of that money reinvested back into our own city. We don't mind sharing it with the mainland, but this would be really nice to do something for the beachside communities, and from a dollars-and-cents perspective, parking works. That's how you maintain things. Parking revenues helps us to offset, as a beach community, our 2.5 million visitors from outsiders. It's what we pay our beach rangers, some of our safety patrol. Certainly, our beach crossovers and cleanup is contributed by that parking revenues that we get. So yes, the park is in disarray. I just met some folks from the UK over the weekend coming here to visit, and to that end, you know, Disney's nice, but they want to see the real Florida. The real Florida is what we offer. And having a nice boardwalk that's safe and open to the public certainly would be a nice way to get that thing started, and it would be nice to see those dollars reinvested. Again, 25% of the sales tax that's generated comes from visitors, which in turn goes to fund the lagoon sales tax. We did have a meeting with League of Cities last night, and we talked to some of our other coastal mayors. We do all talk. Brevard County taxpayers have stepped up and passed the half-cent sales tax. Where's Indian River?
Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with Ms. Bonnie King on this one, but unfortunately, what Ms. Bonnie King mentioned and what's in our agenda packet are different. So while I appreciate the need to put out an RFQ based on prior board direction, there is no need for us to authorize going beyond the establishment and selection of a negotiating committee at this time. Our basic oversight obligations dictate the request to see and evaluate the selection committee ranking before awarding a contract of this magnitude, currently budgeted at over $6 million. Keep in mind, this same board spent 20 minutes debating on whether to grant rent relief for $247. So I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of an RFQ for design-and-build renovation project at Lori Wilson Park, and establish a selection and negotiating committee, at which point, the decision would come back to the board for discussion. Again, I do not doubt the good intentions of the recommendations, but I certainly would like the full board to make consideration on a project of $6 million. So that would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with Ms. Bonnie King on this one, but unfortunately, what Ms. Bonnie King mentioned and what's in our agenda packet are different. So while I appreciate the need to put out an RFQ based on prior board direction, there is no need for us to authorize going beyond the establishment and selection of a negotiating committee at this time. Our basic oversight obligations dictate the request to see and evaluate the selection committee ranking before awarding a contract of this magnitude, currently budgeted at over $6 million. Keep in mind, this same board spent 20 minutes debating on whether to grant rent relief for $247. So I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of an RFQ for design-and-build renovation project at Lori Wilson Park, and establish a selection and negotiating committee, at which point, the decision would come back to the board for discussion. Again, I do not doubt the good intentions of the recommendations, but I certainly would like the full board to make consideration on a project of $6 million. So that would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias has a motion on the table. Commissioner Isnardi?
I'll second with comment. I don't have a problem with that. I'm glad that you're still in support of the project, because I think this is a good project for Cocoa Beach. You know, whether it's out of the norm for it to come back to us, I think it's good for transparency purposes, and I think, you know, it may be the perfect recommendation that the selection committee makes, but I think it's a great idea to bring it back to the board, so we can at least review what their thought process was as far as their rankings. But I think this is a good project. I think this not only has the dual benefit of benefiting residents and benefiting people that live in the area, I think it also has the benefit of tourists, and that's exactly what the TDC tax dollars are designed for, so.
Mr. Barfield?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time working on this project to get, come up to a solution to how to take care of Lori Wilson Park, and I think we have the right solution, and we've discussed before. It's an excellent project. It's a game changer for the beach area, and how it'll fit in, especially with the City of Cocoa Beach passing their referendum for increasing the heights of buildings, actually not really increasing, it's how they measure it, but it makes a big difference on what they'll be able to do, and it's just one of those things that we really move forward. I have no problem having it come back to the county commission. I'm okay with that. You know, it's, I just, my only concern is I don't want things delayed, and that's the only issue I have.
Okay. I have a motion on the table, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing the new renovated Lori Wilson Park soon. We are moving into public comments. Mr. Johnny Dennis?
That's Toby, right? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here again. Before I go into my petition, first, I would like to file a copy of my proposed resolution for a county homeless shelter with the clerk. I respectfully request that this petition be placed on the agenda as soon as possible in the month of December. To the county manager and commissioners, homelessness is a crisis in Brevard County, where there are significant costs and strains on law enforcement, the courts, private businesses, and other public resources. There are only a few organizations and volunteers with the capacity to provide services to the homeless. The large crisis is the lacking of housing. The county government should pledge today to be committed to building a homeless shelter so men, women, and children can have a safe place to sleep every night. Housing stability affords people a foundation for life improvement and opportunity to address the issues that cause their homelessness. When basic needs are met, people can engage in programs to improve their lives, whereas the National Action Network also petitioned for a workshop to sit down and plan a solution to end the homelessness in Brevard County, and also, we can sit down to try to come up with state funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Toby?
Charles Toby, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Speaking tonight on the fuel tank that was left behind, eight-foot high, 18-foot long. Here's a, pictures of it, so you know you got it. So about the fuel tank, that might be full, might not, and they left that, and continuously destroy and take everything I got, and if it's not destroyed, they let my neighbor destroy it. That's at the, almost at the end of the road, across from the lumber company by the second telephone pole, and this was part of a personal vengeance against me to overtake my property from the city that's incorporated around me, and they've utilized their means to try and run me off any way they can. And I've been, I've addressed this fuel tank eight years ago, 10, 12, 15 years ago. Everybody got a copy then. Everybody's getting a copy now. It's still there, but yet, you take everything I have, and my right to, I have no way to make a living now. Anyways, Commissioner Bardwell, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your concern for the first responders and what you did for our county. Whether I agree or not, it's principles before personalities, and I appreciate that. I wish everybody a happy holiday Thanksgiving, and I wanted to clarify that it was Red Lobster I meant to mention about Las Vegas, not the Holiday Inn, and it's got Zir Escape, and never been to Holiday Inn out in Nevada. Aside from that, that fuel tank has a tortoise that I've already, I called all the people, and no one's done nothing about the tortoises or anything that's endangered, and there's springs over there, and the lake was filled in, and the wetlands are all gone, and I'll be submitting more photographs of my work, as on the back of it's going to be a map, and how important that the town of Palm Shores now is. It wasn't that way before, but since it's gone from Post Road to Pineda, which is one of the most important parts of the lagoon recovery, if not the important part, and I'll clarify all that, and I'm running out of time, but I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and maybe tomorrow, I'll get my life back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're moving into public hearings. Item H-1.
Good evening, Board. H-1 is a petition to vacate a portion of a public utility easement in Tortoise View Estates, Satellite Beach. The petitioner's own Lot 3, and they would like to have a, they're requesting a vacation of a two-and-a-half feet, of a seven-and-a-half-foot wide public easement, and it's to remove the existing pool structure as an encumbrance. All pertinent county agencies have been notified, and we've received no objections at this time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I have no problem.
Thank you. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this petition.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Item H-2.
H-2 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct a second public hearing to approve revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6 zoning regulations to remove the maximum density requirement for hotel motels, except in the Merritt Island redevelopment area, which will maintain a maximum density of 30 units to the acre. This item was before you on October 23rd for the first hearing, and it was approved. Now we're asking that you approve the second hearing.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barfield? Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since this issue directly impacts District 2, I believe it's advisable to table this until December 4th to receive input from Commissioner-elect Lober. So I would like to put a motion on the table, sorry, a motion to table this until the December 4th regular meeting, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. Yes, ma'am.
Well, no. Commissioner Barfield had his light on.
I know. I'm, sorry, I'm allowed to do what I want to with the table and thing. Commissioner Barfield?
I think it's appropriate to let this go through now, because we have followed this through different readings, the development, and I feel that it's appropriate that we conclude it with me as my last day here. So that's just what I think.
Okay, sir. I have a motion on the table to table, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay, the item is not tabled. Commissioner Barbarafield?
I make a motion to, excuse me, I make a motion that we approve this as the final reading.
Motion by Commissioner Barfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes 3-2, with Commissioner Isnardi and Tobias an objection, and the reason that, you know, it might have been cool for Commissioner Lober to come on, but we've worked so hard on this for so many months, that he would have to do so much to catch up on it, so, and I think it was ready to go. Item H-3?
Yes, item H-3, this is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the first public hearing to allow 265 and 267 East Merritt Island Causeway, Merritt Island, Florida, seek economic development incentives through the brownfields designation, and to authorize the second public hearing pursuant to Florida Statute 37682C. This is a request from a development company, SBJB in Merritt Island LLC, and they, there's no fiscal impact to the Board of County Commissioners through the economic incentives for the redevelopment program. That'll all be taken care of by the state. This is the first step in this process, which the board needs to determine if they've identified the key five points, and those points are ownership and agreement to redevelop, economic productivity, consistency with the local comprehensive plan, and applications in land use, public notification, and the financial ability to complete the construction. So those items, we're still working with the developer, because they're trying to get their application through to the state before the end of the year, so they can receive the incentives. There will be a second public hearing, presuming that you approve this one and direct us to come back. Thank you, if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barfield?
Do you have any cards on this?
No.
I think this is a good move. Those who understand how the brownfield operates, this is where we actually make a resolution, and it enters into a process where there can be reimbursement, or there can be tax credits to the developers. It's ideal for redevelopment. So that, I make a motion that we approve the resolution, designating tax account 2426764 and 2426763 as a brownfield area under the Section 376.80 Florida statutes.
Okay, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant on that item had asked that a public hearing be announced that will be on the site at 265, 267 East Merritt Island Causeway on December 4th at 1:30 p.m., until no later than 2:30 p.m.
Thank you, ma'am.
For the record.
And that served us the announcement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Item I-1?
Yes. Item I-1 is a request for the board to approve the attached resolution regarding the Wiser Participant Scope and Expanded Deliverables. On April 24th, 2018, the board adopted a resolution to create the Working Group for Innovative Solar Energy Resources, and directed staff to prepare a staff report regarding the implementation of that advisory board. During the discussion, the board mentioned that there was challenges in appointing different appointments for the various boards. So we revised the resolution to include stakeholder appointments, such as the American Society of Civil Engineering, the Home Builder and Construction Association, the American Planning Association, Green Building Councils, and Solar Energy Florida, to name a few. So this will expand that group and help to provide for a quorum, and it also brings some technical expertise into their recommendations. We see that the facilities in the planning department would be the primary department supporting this group, however, as we cross over into other areas. It may involve multiple departments from the county. We also looked at the implementation of this board and the meetings. Most of our advisory boards meet once a month, so we used that same process, and we figured that it would be an annual expense of about $19,048 to implement that group. If you have any questions, we're happy to discuss.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the value this board brings compared to other ones that we have. But I stated prior, I believe the board's creation should be offset with the sun setting of another board. Thankfully, staff is currently working on the process of identifying unnecessary and duplicative boards. I do not believe it is appropriate to use the level of staff time outlined in the agenda report. Effectively, we would be spending more than $16,000 in staff time, which could be used on other priorities, like hardening our IT infrastructure and working with citizens on zoning applications. Potentially, one model that we could use is the citizens' advisory process that we currently have in place, thus saving us thousands of dollars. So I would like to make a motion for staff to come back to the board with a structure for the Wiser Board that requires minimal staff time during the recommendation and development process. After those recommendations are developed, they can be submitted to the county manager and his staff for comment, which we will then be presented, which will then be presented to the board during a regular meeting, thus saving taxpayers thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. So that's my motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Isnardi?
I just, I mean, I know it's difficult, this is a staff question, I know it's difficult to predict, given that, you know, we're going to have a board, and we're going to go through this process, but given the expense, and I'm not opposed to reducing expenses, but if it produces a much bigger cost savings, you know, utility-wise or otherwise, if we do, are able to switch some of our stuff to more cost-effective and solar things, I don't want staff to cut back the time so much to a point to where it's another board that's just... that's just meeting and they're not talking about anything. So, I just want to caution or, I guess, suggest maybe that's more of a board discussion, but that we don't, we don't scale it back too far, that we're not, the staff's not putting in the time to look at these, at some of these projects or some of these initiatives enough to see where we can have savings and where we can be more cost-effective. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Commissioner Barfield?
Yeah, I, I agree. This, the solar energy has progressed so much in the last few years. The economical factors, how much efficiency they are, it's something that's really difficult as a, as a county government to keep up with. And I think it'd be nice to have this because in, in the end, we end up coming out ahead because of the cost-benefit analysis can show we're saving money for the future. So, I think it's an important organization. I think it's an important board to have because really, this, we're looking at the future and how we can do things more efficiently, how we can save money and put that money elsewhere. So, you're going to pay now or you're going to pay later, basically.
Thank you, sir. I, I like this board, but I would also like maybe a few different options for you to come back with. Maybe even if it's, if it would be more to the advantage to meet every other month, I don't know. But maybe if you would come back with that, with a little bit of a breakdown, with some ideas, that would help me a little bit, too.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Barfield in objection. That's pretty good. We're on item I2.
Commissioner, is I2 is a request for the Board to consider the special magistrate's recommendation to reduce an accrued fine from $18,805 to $5,645 and release a lien upon a payment in full for code enforcement case 11CE01131 at 360, I'm sorry, 3647 Buddy Drive, Melbourne, Florida. The special magistrate found this property to be in violation of the, of overgrowth and junk and debris on October 2007. The violation was corrected in 2008 after the fine had accrued to the $18,500 mark. This item came before you on October 23rd where the Board asked staff to go back and verify the notifications and the email correspondence relating to the special magistrate hearing from Mr. Pendle's request to reduce the fines. In doing so, we went back, and you'll see there's an attached staff report, and there's also some email correspondence. We did not find any failed attempts for the notification of the February 15th special magistrate hearing. We did receive an email from Mr. Pendle stating that he missed a hearing due to medical reasons. He also requested it be rescheduled at the March 15th hearing, and it was. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you. I want to thank staff for working diligently on behalf of our citizens and treating everyone fairly. While everyone makes mistakes, this case serves as a microcosm of a kind of behind-the-scenes work that you guys do and is quite frankly rarely seen. And when your work is impugned, I, and I'm sure the rest of the board takes that very seriously. To be frank, this board was lied to. Not once, but many times. So, let me go over these before we render a decision. Mr. Pendle, acting as representative of SL Assets LLC, stated that our staff had failed to notify him for his reduction hearing, and that was, quote, "the only reason we are in front of your board today." The emails sent to the applicant were to the same address which he used. In fact, Mr. Pendleton replied to the notice email after missing the hearing, claiming he had medical issues and wanting a new one, which we, which he was given. In any case, the email was a courtesy by us. Mr. Pendleton had already, or Mr. Pendle had already signed a notarized document with the hearing date, which says in bold and underlined font, quote, "Consider this document your notice of hearing. No other notice will be sent for this request." Mis-truth number two. The applicant wanted to claim, went on to claim that the special magistrate told him that he had been able to attend his first hearing, the fine would have been reduced to his request. Not surprisingly, after reviewing the tapes, this was false. Mis-truth number three. Mr. Pendle also claimed that his title search showed, quote, "no liens or violations", end quote, because it was incurred during an owner twice removed. Again, this is false. Three days after the county got the research request, staff sent the title search company an email which detailed $20,163 in fines on the property. I'm sorry that we had to set aside and, and, and question you guys' work ethic. I was, I didn't, I didn't doubt it. I don't think any of the board did. The hard work, the time, the effort that you guys go on behalf of, of the citizens of Brevard County. I greatly appreciate that, and I think that we would be doing a disservice to, to your hard work by doing anything other than the following motion, which would be requests, reject the request for reduction and charge the justly imposed fine of $18,805. And that is my motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the table for $18,005.
$18,805.
$805, and second by Commissioner Barfield. Sir, would you like to speak?
I would like to speak. The first hearing I did, did miss because of a doctor's appointment, and I rescheduled the hearing in my second hearing, and I actually have the email from her saying that she had the wrong email address, which I would like yous to at least look at. As far as the second hearing that I did go to, they did say in that hearing that if I would have made the first hearing, the money would have been reduced. But because I had to go to a second hearing, I had no choice but to come in front of you to get the approval for the reduction. So, I don't know what tape you listened to because that was very clear. But I, I didn't lie. I haven't lied about anything. Everything that I told was 100% true. Now, if the title company did do a title search and got back the title information, they did not let us know about it, and we hired an attorney to close it. It wasn't even just the title company. It was Jonathan Lack, okay? We didn't just close his property or do a quick lien deed. If you look through the paperwork, you can clearly see we hired somebody and did what we thought was the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Can I at least just submit this? Because it does clearly state her response saying she had the wrong email.
Certainly.
Is that possible?
So, Commissioner, the email that Mr. Pendle has provided was the very first correspondence that we had with him in, in November 3rd. The, the emails that we were referring to in the staff report happened on January 23rd. Actually, I'm sorry, on January 22nd, Ms. Van, Dan Martling emailed Mr. Pendle saying that you've got to get the information to us by the 24th, and we will be scheduled, you will be scheduled for the February 15th, 2018 special magistrate hearing. Mr. Pendle sent an email on January 23rd saying that here are the attached documents. So, the emails correspondence regarding the special magistrate hearing and the dates all appear to have gone through fine.
Were you, were you talking about the email, them having the incorrect email before this date, before January?
I don't remember exactly what the date was, to be honest with you. I just remember that we had a problem with the email address, and I did call her about it, and that's how she sent me the email, because she bounced her email off of my email to make sure she had the correct email. And from what I was to understand, that's why we did not get the notice. I'm not saying that they did anything wrong.
Did not get the notice prior to when they did have the correct email?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted, I wanted to be clear about that.
Correct. Because the first hearing that I was supposed to go to, and that's where the issue came, and I actually went into the hospital, and for like a month there, I didn't get any emails. So, when I got out of hospital, I immediately called her and explained everything that was going on.
And they granted you another hearing?
And they granted me another hearing.
Because circumstances happen?
Correct.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll call them, I got to say something before we do. I, I think there was some misleading last time you were up here. I got confused with, with staff going back and forth. Actually, last meeting, I was ready to vote for you just to cover cost. I don't know that I can take you back to full when the magistrate gave it $5,645. I probably would lean more towards the magistrate, um, payment for it. So, just so the other commissioners know what I'm thinking right now. Commissioner Isnardi?
That's exactly what I had written down in my notes here, too. I think, you know, regardless, I, I don't, I hesitate to call anybody a liar, and I, I don't know if anything was deliberate. I, we can never know because we can't get in your head.
It didn't deliberately.
But, and I, and I appreciate the work that staff did on this as well. Apparently, maybe we do need to review our notification because not everybody does check their email as often, although I understand that we did do our part by sending the email. I think that something as important as a magistrate here, or magistrate hearing or something like that probably needs to be communicated by certified mail, I would think, just for, just to protect ourselves in the future. I know, I, no one likes to incur the extra cost, but this way, there's no question. I know I have a personal email. I have a work email. I have a county work email. I have a school email, and I know how things can get lost or, that's just me. So, I just want to make sure that we're covered as well, so we're protected. I have no problem with the reduction to the magistrate's recommendation. I am usually one that champions for cost as well, because obviously, it's been remedied. But I would be in support of the magistrate's recommendation as well.
Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair, I'd just like everyone to pay attention to the signed and notarized document on, I think the email that he was referring to was in November. So, this is two months later. On January 23rd, it was signed with a notary, Terry Stone, that said, "Consider this document your notice of hearing. No other notices will be sent for this request." So, we don't even need to worry about an email. Here is something, again, not only was it signed, but it was notarized. Months after that email, communication issue was long such rectified. So, I, I don't know how, I don't know how, any other way that being fed to and then calling our work ethic of our, our staff into question, we could impose anything other than what the actual just cost of the fine is. But before you make that decision, please look at, at, you know, the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate, Brevard, Florida on January 23rd.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think registered mail would also be advisable in a situation like this, because I can tell you, and my staff will tell you, I'm terrible at looking at emails.
I'm not the only one that checks that email.
And so, well, I'm just saying that it doesn't, to me, it really doesn't matter. For me, the, the magistrate is the one that viewed all the facts. He reviewed all the facts. He weighed all the facts. He saw, and he's charged with doing exactly that. And his recommendation is $5,600 bucks or whatever it is. And that's where I would lean to go. I, I would support a motion to go with the magistrate's recommendation, $5,645.
Commissioner Isnardi?
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing. It's so funny, you know, it depends on which order you speak.
Great minds work alone.
I know, right? But again, it was, this was reviewed by a magistrate who did have all the facts, and, and I, and I would never question the staff's integrity. I mean, when I suggested the certified mail, it was more as a protective measure for you, and so, this legwork is not going to be required later, perhaps. Again, I don't think there was any malicious intent.
Not intent at all, but this has been going on for a year and a half. So, I'm just trying, trying to piece all the pieces together, along with being out of the hospital for a month.
And I think, and I think the idea behind our fine system, I mean, $50 a day for, you know, days after days, and is, is egregious. I understand why it's in place. It's to get people to move and rectify their issues. However, I think that, you know, that is an excessive amount because of either misunderstanding on your part, you know, maybe us not having a solid enough process.
Well, we weren't the owners at the time.
Right.
So.
But there was communication before.
Yes.
So, again, I, I just reiterate. I, I agree with Commissioners Pritchett and Smith, and I would go with the magistrate's recommendation as well.
Commissioner Barfield?
I'm sorry, but the facts don't add up. The timing doesn't add up, and you look at, at the timing. I mean, it's a rare case. I'm agreeing with Commissioner Tobias right now, but on the 123 date, and it's notarized, that's a date. I, you know, we get, we get a lot of people come before us.
Right.
And a lot of times, they come forward with us, and there are hardships. There's a lot of different hardships. But there's also times when things don't add up.
Right.
And I, I have, I have to say, I, it's going to be one of the only ones I've ever done where I think it needs to be the full price. I just don't think we were told all the facts.
Right. I didn't mean to intentionally lie, just so you know. I just tried to put as many facts together as I possibly could in the timeline that I had.
Okay, I have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor say aye.
Which one are we, uh?
They put a motion for the.
For $18,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. You got it. Okay. I can't make a motion, but I, I think this was kind of a little more responsibility than you're assuming, and that's why typically I go to costs, but because of that, I'm, I'm going to go with the magistrate's reduction. So, do we have a motion from any other commissioners for anything?
I'll make a motion to approve or to go with the magistrate's recommendation. I believe it was six, $5,645.
Motion on the table and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Tobias.
I think that's the first time ever that the voting is this way.
And I apologize. I'm very sorry, staff. I didn't mean to mislead anybody.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a trying thing for me. First time I've ever been through it.
Well, it's all over, and I just pray you get to enjoy your property.
Thank God, it's over. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, we're on item I3.
Evening, commissioners. This is authorization of full funding to upgrade the FEMA flood model for North Merritt Island. You've previously approved budget in this fiscal year for the first two-thirds of that project. The remaining one-third would be funded from District 2 stormwater revenues in fiscal year 1920.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Barfield?
Do you have comments?
I don't.
Well, there's, they have another, a number of options here for how we'll fund this. Number one is review the grant opportunities and shift stat, well, why don't you go ahead and explain it? It'd be easier.
Okay. These were the, the options identified during previous agendas. So, the, the first one... one is to look within the D-2 stormwater fund, and trying to project out all of our budget demands for next year. We get grants coming in throughout the year. So, you know, there may be opportunities for changes between now and when this is funded, to, to slide some things around and offset project delays with, with grant funds. We will always look for those opportunities. Option two is further use of MSTU, Road and Bridge District 2 MSTU funds. This is where the first $150,000 for surveying was funded in the current fiscal year. Another $150,000 is funded this year from stormwater revenues to get the, the modeling started. The remaining funds that we need next year is another $150 to complete the modeling. The.
Let me, let me take it from there.
Yes.
And, and as you'll remember, Commissioners, there was, for the MSTU dollars, there was a, a delay, not a delay, but a mile of road repaving was gonna occur in the following year, that we would then get MSTU dollars there. So there may be limited opportunity to find and utilize those. But what we've done is given you these three options in an order of priorities, what we were recommending. The third option being is if we were not able to identify during the course of this year, those dollars, the $150,000 that's outstanding in number one, or number two, then the third would be to look at unallocated general fund balance forward dollars, which the Budget Office indicates. You know, typically, we do have the opportunity at mid-year supplement, that there's gonna be some opportunities there, and we could identify, I'd say, quote-unquote, "general fund dollars" to, to make up whatever difference up to the $150 that would be needed to be able to complete it, and then put it into, into next year's budget. So those are, what we would have, what we were suggesting is that, that is the priority, that we will look at it to put it into the, into the next year budget as was requested. And that was the recommendation that we would make for the Board for your consideration, or modification as appropriate.
Okay. Are you done, sir?
Uh, is he gonna speak first?
I will look. Mr. Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is highly unusual, as we are looking at funds that haven't been collected. We have no projections for these funds. So, you know, the only reason for funding something in fiscal year 1920, before the budget is created, is to make a decision before the incoming commissioner would be here. Two of these options would be shifting funds from other projects in D-2 that the Commissioner-elect, Lober, may have other ideas on. So there is no legitimate reason for making the decision now, rather than the normal budgetary process that comes up before we understand the amount of revenue that we do come in. So I think there's another option. That would be, option four, is to table that until we have any idea how much tax revenue we have coming into either the MSTU or the general fund, and let the Board make the decision at that time. So that would be my motion, the imaginary option four, which will be table it until we actually start the budgetary process, Madam Chair.
Okay, sir. So I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia for imaginary option number four. Do I have a second? Okay. Motion dies for lack of second. Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, as we said the last meeting, this is so important, because the top priority is to, to keep homes from flooding. And that's, we have got to put towards a study. It's like, if you fund part of it, what do you have? We have to have the whole thing. And we need to make sure there's, that the funding is available. So I, I truly believe we can do the funding now. I mean, I, I actually think there's another option, too. I mentioned that with Mr. Abate this morning. We know there's new construction work going on. We know there's new construction. There will be additional money that comes in. We don't know how much it'll be. We don't understand that, but it will, I would say, we, we target that, the first $150,000 from that funding that we get, to put that towards it. If we do not have that amount of money, then we go ahead and pull the rest from, from the, from the, whatever, when there's funds left over from other projects. That's how I would think we would do it. I, is that logical? I may want to ask Ms. Hayes about that, but... How's that for putting you on the spot?
Good evening, Commissioners. So, in terms of new construction for ad valorem revenue, we won't know what that is going to be. I mean, certainly, we make projections when we're developing the budget. And I would also say that, you know, we would be, before we start budget development, we would be looking to the Board for direction on how to develop the budget. If that were the direction given by the Board in terms of using the new construction dollars. I was just trying to pull up what that number was for this year, for the 1819 budget, for the general fund dollars. Were you looking at general fund dollars?
Yes.
Or the Road and Bridge District 2 MSTU dollars? Give me one second, I just had it up.
While she's looking that up, I'd just add that, when we do an RFP to search for a consultant to do this modeling, and, and we would then want to enter into a contract for $300,000 for the full modeling, we can't do that unless we have the full budget identified in, in various fiscal years. And so, unless we were gonna try to phase that modeling, or something, it would, it would be very useful to identify the funding, the full source of funding, before we get to the point of trying to award a contract to get the work started.
So, for the fiscal year 1819, for the general fund, the increased revenue that was due to new construction is approximately $2.3 million. That was the amount of increased ad valorem revenue we got from new construction this year.
So, excuse me if it's okay. So what you're saying, that we won't know, Virginia, you're saying, we can't really depend on that, because we can't project, or?
No, I don't think she was saying.
I mean, we, we can have a sort of if-this, then-that scenario. I believe that's fine for purchasing, as long as there's a, a commitment that the dollars are going to be available to complete the work.
Can we do a combination, then?
Yeah. And, and I think what Jill was saying is, the likelihood is that we will have, you know, if we had $2.3 million, and I believe that was a very substantial increase from the prior year, so we may not get that same amount, or we, we may, but we will have, you know, I would venture, you know, I think it's hard for us to guess, but it's gonna be significantly more than $150,000. So that amount of money would be available in new construction, if the Board decided to give us that directive.
So what we could do is say, $150,000 would come out of the projected general fund increase because of construction. If that doesn't make that, the difference could come out of the, of the MSTU, or out of the stormwater funds. Or the additional resources we have.
Yeah, or it could be the other way, whatever the Board decides. We could do those two first, and then use the new construction as the third source. But that's, you know, it'd be up to the Board to decide, and of course, we'll follow that direction.
Okay.
Mr. Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is for Ms. Hayes. What will our budget be for 2019, 2020?
It is too early for me to, to project that. We usually start projections. I can tell you that for the fiscal year 1819 budget, we had a workshop in February, and then began working on projections March, April, May.
Do we have, follow-up, Madam Chair?
Please.
Do we have specific line item projection, or line item expenses, such as this one, already allocated in the budget?
We have multi-year CIP plan, where we identify projects that will be multiple years, out for five years, knowing that there's certain funding that will be allocated for those projects.
Since this is general fund dollars, am I to understand, these $150,000 could go anywhere countywide for such services as public safety, for our sheriff's deputies, or raises for our hard-working county staff? Would, would that money be able, that new construction dollars be able to use for either of those two, or a myriad of other potential expenditures?
Correct. The general fund is where you have the most discretion, and so yes, they could be used for that purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barfield?
Well, I'll come back to what I said originally, when we started this. This is a public safety issue, and public safety is a top priority of our government. I really believe what we need to do is go ahead and we'll fund this. We'll start with, I'll make a motion, that we fund it with new revenue from, in the general fund, and if we need other funding, we take that from either the, the carryover or leftovers from other projects, or we do it from the District 2 MSTU funds.
Commissioner Nardi?
I would just say, you know, I have no problem supporting this. However, I don't agree that it should come from general fund. I think we're each allocated in our own district, and as much as I have preached up here over and over again, I don't like that we're district for that reason, that we all have our own district, and we all fight for territory. However, I know when I need something done in my district, whether it be like, a small stormwater project, whether it be any, any sort of project at all, I've got to pull from somewhere else within my district. So I would, you know, the next Commissioner could come in and undo this entire thing in his first meeting. So whether we pass this now or not, you know, I would just ask that, obviously, before you go out to RFP, you discuss it with the Commissioner, and then I would support this. However, I would only support this if we are pulling that money from the District 2, either in the MSTU, or reassigning existing stormwater funds, because that's what we've done in our district, and that's sort of why we each get our own pile of money. And I think this is a great project. I think this is something that we need to do. But I get a little nervous with general fund monies, because I could, I could argue, we just, we'd had a study from Kittleman and Associates at our couple TPO meetings ago. They showed District 5 had four out of the six busiest roads in the county. I could arguably have a very strong and fair argument that we need more road money, because my district has the busiest, some of the busiest roads, and travel through District 3, 4, and 5. But I don't do that, because I understand that we each have to support one another, and I just think that we need to do it responsibly. So I would be in support of this, only if that funding comes from District 2.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I would need some time to, to kick that around, because the new construction coming in is gonna actually be divided through the county. So that's something that we would all participate in anyways. And again, you know, Commissioner Lober can come in and make some changes, you know, he has that ability to later. But this is kind of a really big problem in Merritt Island, and I know we need to do it. So I would still probably be supportive if we start with one, like you recommend, and go to two. Instead of three, go ahead and look at the new construction when it comes to that. Because I don't want to not be able to do this. I don't know if there's gonna be enough in all of those funds, but I think we need to, to be able to guarantee it as a commission, that we, we think it's something we need to do. And those construction funds, again, like you said, Commissioner Nardi, that'll be something that'll be divided through the county. We can just, you know, help with that allocation, because Commissioner Barfield does believe it's that important for, for his district. And if you bring up those roads, I'll look at them with you. So. And Commissioner Barfield?
Okay. I'll amend my motion that we get, that the funding will come from District 2 stormwater. And the second priority would be the District 2 MSTU funds. If that's not enough, after it's all done, then, then we would have to look at general fund. And general fund, as a last resort.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Is that a second?
That's what I was gonna suggest, so I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion on the table in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4/1 with Commissioner Tabia in objection. We are moving to item J-2, because item J-1 was deleted. Commissioner Tabia, good resolution, sir. You're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a PowerPoint. Don't worry, it's only four slides, I think. I don't know if I can have the ability to do that. There we go. Local preference. I informed the Board in September that I would be making this proposal, when we were discussing the merits of having e-verify policy that matched state and federal requirements. Commissioner Barfield commented on e-verify, that quote, "He is really amazed that Brevard County has not automatically incorporated this, because its state requires it, and the federal government requires it. He's always thought Brevard had this, too." Well, this is a similar situation. Local preference sounds like a good idea. Who doesn't want local businesses, which employ our citizens and pay local taxes, to do well? Commissioner Smith went on and said, quote, "One of my positions that I champion is that I am business-friendly, we welcome businesses, and we want to treat them, treat everyone fairly." I think that is absolutely appropriate. So before I get into one of, a couple of these slides, I wanted to point out what the research said behind this. Professor Adam Hofer, at the University of Wisconsin, at the Russell School of Military College of North Carolina, said that preference policies undermine competition and, quote, "significantly, significantly increase the cost of government", unquote. Matthew Mitchell, of the Mercatus Center, in a book entitled, "The Pathway of Privilege: The Economic Consequences of Government Favoritism," found that these types of policies misdirect resource, impede genuine economic process, breed corruption, and undermine the legitimacy of both the government and the private sector. Goodness gracious. So, here's a basic example. Here's how we spend our dollars, and I certainly hope that we would spend the public's dollars the same way, too. Identical Ford F-150s, one costs $28,000, which they only cost $28,000. $28,000 in Orlando, one costs $29,400 in Melbourne. That would be within the 5% window, and thus, we would give the opportunity, the way the policy reads, the local, the ability to match that. Unfortunately, this causes a whole bunch of issues, as we'll talk about later. So I certainly hope that we would, again, spend the money, our money, the same way as, as we spend county resources. So questions, obviously, always brought up, does this impact Brevard County? And it does. This policy has had severe unintended consequences. Staff had to divert their focus from disaster recovery to negotiate contracts in the aftermath of Hurricane Matthew. The issue was this. We had bid out some projects using local preference. And when FEMA was going to come in and reimburse us, we couldn't use the contracts that we had in place, because we had local preference. So what this did was delay our ability to further disaster relief in a timely manner. Had we not had this local preference policy in place, we then could have used the existing, existing bids. I just wanted to point out that this National Institute of Government Purchasing cited many, many, which I've included here, many, many reasons. This is a nonprofit, nonpartisan- This is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. Why this local preference causes all sorts of issues, everything from, you know, corruption to increased price to limiting competition. I think it would be in the best interest of taxpayers if we went away, we did away with this local preference pricing. So I appreciate with you guys hanging with me on this one, but my motion would be to do away with the, with the local preference in county purchasing.
I have a motion on the table.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. Commissioner Isnardi, did you want to comment?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'm in support of this and I honestly didn't know about FEMA, so that's interesting information. But I have an issue because although it sounds very good and it feels very good and you would think that you're helping the little guy, you're actually hurting him. Oftentimes what happens is these big companies, and since we do have a local preference and they, you know, and scoring is geared toward that, they'll just open up little satellite offices, throw a couple of desks in there and a couple of people, and we wind up not benefiting from that at all. I think it's almost a form of bid rigging, even though that may not be the intention. What you're doing is offering either, you know, if the local company was to come in and do it for the same price, that's not a way to go either. So, you know, oftentimes, big general contractors and for big projects, they sub out all their work to local guys anyway and that seems to be the people that we need to help. Those are the people that work hard every day out in our community. So I think local preference, although it's probably well-intended, actually hurts competition and it hurts the local little guy. I think it puts him at a disadvantage for competition, so I'll be in support of repealing this as well.
Good point. Commissioner Barfield.
I have two questions for Leslie. The first one, well, can you just go ahead and explain how we, I mean, I understand it, but how we do the local preference with the low bid, how all that works out, just in simple terms, if you can?
Light's not coming on, but you can hear me.
I hear you now.
But the light's not working. Okay, Brevard, we do have currently, and keep in mind, this, there was a pilot program in 2009, so there's been several amendments to our policy because there was some, you know, originally we were allowing, we were paying 5% more. Now there's the match that we have. And then there's been some changes in the points assigned in the RFQ and RFP process. And in that phase, on the scoring of an RFP or an RFQ, additional points are given to the local firms for Brevard companies. And then there's also additional points for a state company. So there's a large advantage on the consultant side. In addition to this 5% match, there's the CCNA that is impacted by this local preference. And actually, Brevard is one of the few agencies that includes CCNA in their local preference policy.
Well, how, can you explain the, I know, this is the way I understand it, in a RFQ, I guess?
Yes.
For a price. So you have four people, four companies that come in and the lower bidder is not a local preference, not a local person.
In an RFQ?
Next one above, go ahead.
Okay, in an RFQ, price is not a factor. It's only based on qualifications.
Yeah, I believe he's like to hear about when we get a RFP or a bid and the local, excuse me, the lowest bid is within 5%, but they're outside of Brevard, what the impact is in terms of matching.
Okay, and outside from Brevard, if they are asked to, the bidders that are here locally could artificially inflate those costs because they know there's that 5%. Do they have to match that, you know, come in with that 5%? That we know that that could possibly happen, you know, to do that.
And basically what happens is an outside of Brevard vendor could put in a bid and if the local vendor is within 5%, they are entitled to match that bid and therefore knock out the vendor who was from outside Brevard. And that's what the current policy provides for.
Okay. My second question is this. Over the last couple of years, how many awards have gone based on this to the local preference?
Over the past few years, there's only been a few that are little or no impact, basically. In 2000, I can give you the exact ones. It's been very little. Let me find that. Okay, in 2017, we did 125 solicitations and local preference was a factor in two of those.
Two of those?
Two, mhm. And that was on a CCNA selection where a number one ranked firm came in that was not from Brevard County with the scoring that was applied based on the local preference points. They then were moved up to number one.
So less than 2%.
Right.
Well.
And then in 2018, it was 150 solicitations and only one was impacted.
Well, it seems to me that where our economy is right now, the low unemployment rate, it's hard to find employees, it's hard to get a lot of work done. When we did this initially, I think it was before I was here, but it was, the economy wasn't doing so hot and we wanted to keep money inside the county. So I support, I support dropping this. I don't think we need to do this any longer. I think we need to stick to the, looking at the best companies. And generally, also, and if it's a large project, they hire locally anyway.
They do.
So especially the crafts and all, that's, and the skills, that's what they do. So I'll support it.
I have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes five-zero. Moving into item J three. Mr. Kendall Moore and Wendy Anderson and County Manager, you? Or Ms. Eadie?
I believe Mr. Moore will be presenting this proposal on this item.
Okay. Mr. Kendall Moore.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Mr. Abate, Ms. Bentley. My name is Kendall Moore from the Moore Law Group, professional address 895 Barton Boulevard in Rockledge. We are actually the last item on the agenda tonight, so I'm not going to take the time to go back through what I think you know is the history of U-SSA, who they are, how they got here, you know, ultimately and the like, but try to specifically spend a few minutes that we have, four minutes and 29 seconds left, to talk to you a little bit about the specific item on the agenda before you tonight. And that specific item, I think you know that Brevard County entered into a lease with U-SSA for the Vieira Stadium complex. Original lease goes back to 2015, which was August the 3rd, and then the first lease amendment dated March 24th, 2017. Without going through those other additions, what we're before you tonight is simply requesting a second amendment to the U-SSA lease. This specific matter that's before you tonight came before you for one simple reason, and that simple reason is that in the 2015 original lease and the 2017 amended lease, there was a contemplation by both parties, I would suggest to you, the county commission at that time, as well as U-SSA, that construction would be complete on the facility by January of 2018. And therefore, the lease time and the beginning of the room night obligation, which we know from that original lease being 75,000 room nights, was set to begin in January of 2018. What's the operational reality of exactly what took place? The unforeseen situation conditions on the site resulted in the permanent certificate of occupancy not being achieved until April the 1st of 2018. So rather than January the 1st, turned out to be April the 1st of 2018. And so thus far in 2018, U-SSA has generated 52,214 room nights. When this agenda item arose, I know that some of you have asked U-SSA kind of how those are generated, how they're calculated, and how that works. So ultimately, in short, and I think the officials from the TDC are here who can answer any additional questions for you, if you have them for your staff, that those room nights, the information is collected from Anthony Travel, which is the travel agent vendor, and also from a housing form, which is a form that's collected from each individual player and/or family that comes to Brevard for the sake of a U-SSA tournament. At that time, that information is submitted to the TDC and they have created or gone through a verification process at which time they go back to check those relative room nights. Now, the ones that are hotel-based are a little bit easier to do because they can go get a pick-up and run report from the hotel to verify those, but it takes them just a little bit longer to verify those that may be from alternative sources like VBRO or something of that nature. So what we're asking this evening, in order to remedy this matter, there's two potential or proposed ways that we could go about remedying this matter. So option number one, since in 2018, there were contemplated that there would be 12 months of room night generation and after the certificate of occupancy was gained, there were only nine months of room night generation. The first option would be to reduce the requirement from 75,000 to 56,250 room nights, which would represent the prorata share of nine months as opposed to 12 months of room night production. A second option, which some of you asked once the agenda item was created and one that was discussed in depth with staff at that time, would be rather than reducing 2018, Madam Chair, I'm down to 58 seconds, if the board will be kind enough just to give us a couple extra minutes so we can finish, we promise we won't take too long.
We're all good with that, sir.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The second option would be rather than counting just nine months in 2018, to keep the 75,000 room night obligation the same, but to slide the calendar to the right by 90 days, which means that it would start counting on April the 1st rather than January the 1st. And so if we were starting on April the 1st, then we would ultimately still keep the same room night obligations that were contemplated in the original agreement. And so we, I would suggest to you on the record, Madam Chair, and I do have with me this evening Wendy Anderson, who is an attorney with U-SSA, would suggest to you this evening that we would be in favor of either of those options that would ultimately take into account that the certificate of occupancy was not granted until April the 1st. That the date change, as I said, would still maintain that U-SSA would have responsibility for the same number of room nights arguably going from April of 18 to April of 19 rather than January of 18 to December of 2018. So again, we've been asked kind of what's the rationale behind this. Certainly, they were unforeseen circumstances that created the 90-day delay. And although you would be far more capable of speaking to board intent than I would, it's our suggestion that the intent of both parties at the time, U-SSA and the Board of County Commissioners, is that you wouldn't be asking them to generate room nights at a time before the facility was complete. And we just think in the idea of just the simple interpretation and the fairness, that that would be an appropriate amendment to request. Now, I've said to Ms. Bentley and even to any of you who have asked, we are not arguing what the lease says on its face. The lease did contemplate that certainly the construction would be complete and that operations would begin in January of 2018. The reality of it is that that turned out to be April of 2018. Since we were in the amendment process, there were a couple of other issues that I just want to raise. I mean, that was clearly the central issue that brought this agenda item to bear, but there were a couple of other items that did come up that I think that are important. The first of which, there was some concern or confusion in the language relative to the $250,000 that is owed by U-SSA. And so the first part was to clarify that there are, in fact, two separate $250,000 payments. The first of which is a payment to the ARR account, a payment that U-SSA makes to the county. But the second one was, going back and looking at the notes, what had appeared that the staff and the board contemplated at that time was you knew what it cost the nationals to run that facility. And the board had absolutely no desire, which is appropriate, to be responsible for maintenance and capital improvements from a base standpoint. And so in the lease, it does say that U-SSA is responsible for $250,000 in maintenance and capital improvement payments. So that would be on an annual basis, not paid to the county, but ultimately required to be spent by U-SSA. One of the things that the lease does add, actually two things that did not exist in the original lease. First, they were required to spend it, but there was no mechanism for reporting. So the lease amendment does add a mechanism for reporting. And then the second thing is it does add an audit provision that would ultimately allow you to audit that information once it is brought to you relative to the $250,000 that's spent. Madam Chair, members of the Commission tonight, we are coming for you, before you, asking for two things. One is, on a simple equity and clarity basis, to confirm, clarify via lease amendment, second lease amendment, that in fact, you did not intend for the U-SSA to be responsible for room nights prior to the completion of the construction of the facility. They are fully willing and would be happy to meet their obligations of the 75,000 room nights if we were to start counting as of the day that the CO was received. And so we'd ask you to consider this amendment. We've spent some time with Ms. Bentley and Mr. Abate. They may have some additional ideas or thought processes to put forward, Madam Chair, but we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
You said there's two. That's one.
Two.
Two things you'd like us to consider. You said one, to confirm the change of the lease.
Well, there are two options that you may consider in terms of how to change.
Thank you.
So let me just confirm, Madam Chair, if I could. So option number one would be to continue the beginning of the lease from January the 1st to December 31st of 2018 with a reduction in the room night count to 56,250 room nights, which would be the equivalent of a nine-month requirement. Or the second would be not to reduce the room night count at all, just to start counting from April and count from April of 2018 to April of 2019. Arguably, they would still be required for 75,000 room nights. The county would still get the benefit of the tourist tax and others associated with that room night production.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great presentation from, boy, you did, you did a really good job describing everything. I think it would be better, Commissioners, to go ahead and change the date from April 1 to April 1. That way, we don't have to change the monetary numbers in the contract. And I do agree that there's some things that happened that you weren't able to open on time, but you did open pretty quickly. I really didn't think you'd be ready April 1. And you did, and you're really doing a great job over there. So I like the option of just changing it from April 1 to April 1, keep your same contract in. I know you'll meet the room nights and I think that's just a cleaner way of doing it. And I appreciate that you're going to be able to show us how the money's spent and show that it is being used for maintenance in the building because that was a question, you know, how are we going to see this? So we're going to be able to see that with an auditability and that's really good. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, is one of the two remaining individuals that was part of that board. I concur with the assertions that you made and I agree that option two would be, from my point of view, the easiest and cleanest way to do this rather than trying to do any more calculations or anything. Just change it to April 1 and April 1, 2019, you have numbers and go from there. And I like the idea that we need an audit procedure for the $250,000 that they're going to spend. How else are we going to know and how can they justify that they did or they didn't? So I think that's kind of a no-brainer also. So if you guys want a motion, I would make a motion that we go with option two, changing it to April 1 start date and that we create some kind of an audit procedure so that they can document the monies that they spend to make this contract work.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Can I have a second for discussion? Because I have a, okay, second for discussion. Mr. Abate.
I just had one point of clarification, which was on the amendment, as it was presented to the board, it did speak of if there was a prorata that U-SSA would be waiving any overage just for the first year. That would apply to option one only or?
If, okay, said it would apply to option two as well. And I think what Mr. Abate is referencing is ultimately, as you know, if you are above or below, you're entitled to a reduction on the taxes above and have to pay a payment of what's below. And so ultimately, if you did slide to the right, even though we would keep the same room night obligation of the 75,000, we would waive- room night obligation of the 75,000, we would waive any entitlement to the overage that we may have for going over 75,000. Thank you.
Commissioner Tabaya, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a question for clarification and a few on some of the points that you made. So in your opinion, does the lease agreement now, as written, match the clarifications contained in this amendment?
If you could clarify again, does the lease as it's written today?
So from your perspective, does your interpretation of the contract match the, you mentioned the $250,000, does that match your interpretation of the way it's, it's currently written?
Let me, let me break that down to each particular one. Relative to the $250,000 ARR, USSA believes that that's been a payment that's been agreed to from the beginning and, and prepared and, and to pay that. Second one would be the, the $250,000 spent internally. Let me say clearly for the record, USSA is extremely appreciative to the $10 million that they got from this board and have spent millions ultimately in excess of that. So we would provide that documentation, which would clearly show the 250-plus spent for this coming year. The one that, that I referenced in my earlier comments, clearly on its face today, the lease does say, beginning in January the first, does specify for 2018, and ultimately on its face, it could subject USSA to penalties if you did not achieve 75,000 room nights for that night. That's exactly what it says on its face.
Thank you. You, you mentioned right off the beginning, your premise was that the Commission, in your words, contemplated not addressing the 75,000 room nights until the CO was, was given. So what I, was provided, so what I did is I went back and, and looked at some of previous Commission, in fact, one that I sat on in March 2017. Commissioner Smith inquired from our Tourism Director at the time, Mr. Garvey, how the USSA, great question, could be expected to reach the 75,000 room nights that year when he, when they would not be able to get full use of the facility during that full year. Mr. Garvey informed the board that the room night requirement was intended to be annual and would not run until, his words, not mine, quote, "the beginning of 2018." So the question is this, what led you to believe with our staff telling us that it wouldn't start, it would start at the beginning of 2018, that the intent of the board was any different than what our staff was telling us?
I mean, I think that's a, a clearment, Commissioner. That, that comment that you read took place in this chamber at a board meeting in 2017. At that time, when the lease was drafted, the clear intent was that it would begin in January of 2018, which presumably would be at the time that construction was complete. That's what was contemplated in 2017. The operational reality was, it was not completed in January. And so I think if, if I was asking you to slide it to the left, then, you know, I mean, potentially that would be right. What we're saying is that it did not occur until after that potential date.
So you believe the board knew the construction schedule of the USSA's complex? Which gets me to the, which gets me to the second aspect here. At what time did USSA take over or get the keys, if you will, to that facility?
I would have to go back and look at the exact record, Commissioner, but I think if you'd recollect, it was a somewhat of a staged procedure. You had the Washington Nationals with a moving date of coming and leaving. You had ultimately a time and opportunity for them to take over some office space prior to that and allowing their planning process, which I think may have even happened as early as 2017, and then ultimately the intent for the playability in 2018. And my, my suggestion to you, Commissioner, relative to the board's intent, the board only can speak to its intent. Our suggestion on the basis is, basis of equity, basis of fairness, and the basis of what intent, I don't think either party at that time would have suggested signing up to generate room nights for a facility that did not exist. You are correct. On its face, it does say January the 1st, 2018, but because the operational reality was different, that's the basis for our request this evening.
Thank you. Did, I, I assume the county treated your client fairly. You were contingent on the CO, which the county provides you with. My question is, did at any time the county provide any, any problems for delays that you guys could not have fore, foreseen before you made those, made those commitments to, and you voluntarily signed the contract thus, thus, was it our fault, in other words?
Commissioner, never once have you heard us articulate, nor has your staff, in any way, shape, or form, that it was the county's fault relative to that. I did reference some unforeseen circumstances, whether they be site conditions or others that were not visible at the time, but regardless of that, we have not taken any position that it's ultimately the county's fault that that has taken place.
So, so that, it is someone's fault, right? It was projected, as staff said, for 2018. If it was not, what you're asking for is a reduction of about 60,000 bucks is what I'm getting from staff. If it wasn't, which I need to look at because this is extremely important, this is taxpayer resources that could be used in a whole myriad of other ways. If it wasn't the county, if it wasn't the county's fault for you receiving that, and I imagine you did an inspection, whose fault was it that it did not open as planned on January of, or was, did not receive the CO for January of 2018?
Commissioner, I'm, I'm not here to attribute fault in any way, shape, or form. Our simple request to you today was to acknowledge the fact that the CO did not take place at that time. I think of this project for, for both of us, both USSA and Brevard County, was one that we embarked upon where there were many questions on both sides of this. And I am particularly proud in terms of what's been able to be accomplished in this regard. And so tonight, as I've said to you, you once previously, clearly it says on its face January the 1st. We are not attributing fault to the county. What we are asking you to do per amendment is to consider the beginning of the lease being April the 1st as opposed to January the 1st for operational purposes that would allow us to accomplish the room nights and allow you, and let me just go back and clarify that, you said 62,000. I think I heard the motion suggest moving it to April. Arguably, if it's April, there would not be the $62,000 ultimately lost. You're gonna get the, the benefit of the totality of the room nights. If they don't make it, ultimately, they would still be subject to a penalty, but the tourist tax collections and others of those would be apropos for what was expected for a 12-month period.
Thank you. First, speaking of the contract, did the USSA meet the terms of Section 4.3 of the lease agreement, which states that the tenant is required to pay the taxes on the property at all times?
They have paid the taxes. I think that you, I think.
That was my question.
I think that you're aware, Commissioner, that, that this prior year and the tax year, there were some questions and concerns about where the bill was sent and how it ended up. But at the end of the day, USSA has satisfied that obligation, to my knowledge.
So this would not be the first time that there has been issues that, again, weren't the county's fault, but were somebody else's? Is that, and I don't expect you to take blame?
I'm, I'm not assessing fault in, in any way, shape, or form, Commissioner. I think your question was that the, you know, whether or not the taxes were paid, we do acknowledge regardless of our fault or whomever's, that those taxes were not received on time, and that's certainly part of the record.
Thank you.
Commissioner Snardi?
I almost lost my train of thought because one of my questions, or two of my questions were answered. I don't know, again, like you said, you don't wanna assign blame, but, I mean, how long have you represented USSA yourself personally?
I'm not sure, Commissioner, maybe 18 days or so, I'm not sure that that's, yes.
Well, the reason why I ask that is because I've known you for many years and I know how diligent you are, and I would, I would hard, be hard-pressed to, to go out on a limb and say that you would miss this, like that you would wait till November to amend a contract knowing full well that you didn't get fully operational until April. And I have questions for you, and I appreciate you answering some of those questions for me today. I don't have a problem as far as making sure intentions were, were met, you know, that we, that we amend things to, to make sure that we're being accurate as well. What I have an issue with, and I think, you know, I expressed a little bit of this to you as well, where I get heartburn, for lack of a better word, term, is even though it may not be directly related to what you're asking for in the amendment, is I have, I have trouble with, and it is, in my opinion, it does directly relate to it, I have a problem with the validation of room nights. Now, where I understand that our county staff, and I spoke with our manager who validated that everything, that the amount of, enormous amount of work that our employee put in to make sure that we can validate some of them on our end, we have no control over what a travel agency who, who already does business with USSA tells us. I mean, we, we don't have a right to their books. And what I also have an issue with, and I'm glad that there was a sort of audit provision in here, we as a Commissioner, there has been Commissioners of past, and I express this to you as well, but it's better that I get it on the record, we have put our Economic Development Commission through the wringer for a million dollars, a little over a million dollars, where this is like 16 million dollars that USSA has received on behalf of the county, on behalf of decisions that Commissions have made. So I would be happy to support an agreement that had an extensive, and by what I mean is extensive, an extensive audit process, given the fact that they are, they have such a large amount of our tax dollars, because ultimately, we're responsible for it. I mean, we have no, we have no eyes on what's going on there. And, and given some of the decisions in past, and rather than rehash those, I mean, I'll just talk about some of the decisions this board made on waiving bid processes and so forth, you know, whether ill-intended or not, we're still answerable for that of, of why we chose to go that way. So for me, I would be okay with this. You know, I, I would like to see maybe a little bit change in language, but I would like a stronger audit provision. And I, you know, the old lease agreement had, in my opinion, a little bit stronger of an, of an audit provision in there, and I spoke with the manager about that well, as well, to make sure I wasn't going crazy. But I, I would like to see a, a stronger audit provision in this, and I would be happy to support it. And I think that, you know, you'll, you'll get your majority had those, you know, with those things in place, because I think ultimately, we're responsible for those dollars, and I want a fully transparent process to make that happen. But I agree, I, I think, I think intention, obviously, you know, how, how can you, how can we base this on? I think April to April is, is the perfect solution because, and that does give you a solid 12 months. However, I want a better auditing process for room nights, and I want a better auditing process for monies expended considering the extremely large dollar amount that USSA received.
Madam Chair, just as a, as a follow-up on those, relative to this particular audit provision, there are some provisions in the lease and in the global contract, but there wasn't a provision that specifically addressed verification and audit relative to the $250,000 that they are required to spend for capital maintenance and improvement. So that, the, the audit provision specifically relates to that. It was something we agreed to add. It didn't exist in the prior lease relative to this issue. So I think we were open to that request and suggestion from the staff. The, the second one was, we always have to remember that this relationship is actually a tenant relationship. And so you have provided the dollars to us that I think you did, you know, oversee and were able to verify what was spent from a construction perspective relative to that, but from an operation standpoint, in internal operations, this is ultimately a lease and, and they are a tenant, so the, the operations do ultimately fall under their regard. But there are other audit provisions that exist in that. I don't think that, that we, you know, have concern about, about any audit provision or, or verification in that regard. And then as, as it relates to room nights, the travel agent and the sign-in sheet that they provide when players and families come in, that's the ultimate raw data. The verification process takes place on ultimately the county's side. So you get the raw data, and as I, I talked to Mr. Bartusik, a large portion of that, if you're staying in one of the 30 major hotels that are under contract, they are able to provide a pickup and run report that you can ultimately go line by line, room by room, person by person and verify. And I'm pretty sure that that is taking place today as a part of the process. Where it does get a little more difficult is when a person puts down, I stayed at Kendall Moore's house, I did VRBO, I did that. Those are required to be checked on a one-by-one basis. So that is a little bit more slow, but I mean, certainly that verification process exists on the county's side of the table by contract. I think USSA is required to provide the documented detail relative to number of people, room nights, their names, their numbers, how long they stayed, how many beds were in the room. That's the detail that we're required to provide to the county as per the contract.
And I, and I honestly, I don't have a problem supporting this, but I, I questioned the, the hastiness of it. However, again, that's why I wanted you to verify for the record how long you've been on this, because I don't, I don't know that it was up to the county to, to say, okay, well, we're gonna go back, we're gonna, you know, start writing these rooms from April, start recording the, the numbers from there, because ultimately, it was up to you, because if you didn't provide those numbers at 75,000, it was up to you to come to the county. But not you personally, but I just wanted that for the record, because this really isn't about, you know, the work that you've done to try to rectify it, it's about the timing. And I understand that, you know, I mean, it's the elephant in the room nobody wants to talk about, this commission's changing, but I honestly believe that you could easily get your supermajority vote with some more provisions in here and some more transparency. And again, this is just the lease, this is, you know, but it ultimately ties down to relationships and it ultimately ties down to history, because USSA is that history, good and bad, in my opinion. And, and I think anybody would be, would be less than honest if they didn't say that it should have been a lot more tied up correctly, you know, some of, some of those items. And I'm not, again, and I, and I, I've said this before, probably too much, I'm not, I'm not anti-USSA at all, and I, I just want a completely transparent process through all of it, because ultimately, it's us that is answerable to that.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Barfield?
You know, logic dictates, you can't, you can't charge some, someone for something that they aren't having responsibility. You have a CO that didn't start to April 1st, and it just makes no sense, it's not a fairness either way, to be able to make them responsible for a part of that where they're, they don't even have a certificate of occupancy. So I, I think it's right to just do the April 1st to the April 1st or March 30th, and I think it's the right way to go. And with that, I call a question.
Okay, I have a called question.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I have a bit of information you probably need. This proposal, as it was presented, had a monetary impact. And because there was a monetary impact, you required a supermajority. If you go for option two and it shifts to April to April, then there's not a monetary impact, and I think you can go with a simple majority under the ordinance.
Okay. So all in favor? The motion was to go with the date shift, correct, Commissioner Smith?
April 1st from 2018.
And that was your second?
2019, yes, sir.
I don't think there was monetary to do that. Hi, Jim.
I'm sorry, Chair, just since we're staff here. When you're talking about sliding April 1st to March 31st, you mean each, every year of the contract will be April 1st to March 31st?
Yes.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
Jim, can you help me understand this? At that point, it won't match up with the tax collection, correct? I mean, tax collection being January 1 to December 31, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So explain to me how in the heck you're gonna be able to do that? That's the problem with this contract, and that's the problem with the amendment to the contract, and that's the problem with the initial contract, that every time we darn change it, 14 other things pop up. And this is just me, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an accountant, but I do have an attorney out there that just pointed this out to me. And explain to me how we're going to solve this unless we come back here with another amendment next week, how my attorney explained it.
Yeah, let me address that for you. The way we contemplate that happening is the tax bill, for example, that, that comes out, wherein, that came out in November of 2017, that would be the tax bill that would be applicable under the formula that's in the contract. If there was a, a deficiency in the period of April of 2018 through March of 2019, that would be the, the 12-month period we would look at. And under the, the contract provision, what would occur is that if there was, if they didn't hit the target for that 12-month period, then they would pay a percentage, excuse me, they would pay a percentage against the base $250,000 that annually would, they're obligated to put in expenses toward, toward the stadium and the property. Where it impacts us on the taxes is that there's a provision that says if they go over the 2,000, excuse me, if they go over the 75,000 room nights for that period of time, that they've already waived it for 2018, 2019, so that, so that's not a problem. So what they've paid in taxes, what they paid for the tax bill of 2017, November 2017, when that bill came out, they are gonna get no reimbursement, no matter what they do in terms of the rooms for 2018. That's April 1st of 2018 through March That's April 1 of 2018 through March 30 of 2019. In the future year, in the tax bill that's going out now, they would have to wait until April 1 of 2019 completes March of 2020 to determine, do they get any reimbursement for the taxes that they're going to pay here? And that's only if they go over, and that's the second year, 75,000 rooms, and they're only going to get a percentage of that tax back. So getting the reimbursement back, they would look back to the prior year from the period of time that we're dealing with from April 1. The first time it would actually come into effect would be April 1, 2019, through March 31, 2020. And that would be for the tax bill that's going out this month.
Okay.
That was a great explanation. You lost me after like the second sentence.
I lost myself, too, but that's okay.
And, you know, we just, you know, you look very intelligent. That's a great new suit, by the way. Can you help me? It just boils down to this question. And I know policy is up here, but help me, how is, how are the Brevard County taxpayers better off by foregoing, by amending this contract, again, providing this change to the USSA? How do the Brevard County taxpayers benefit by foregoing that, whatever the way the contract is written? I understand that USSA, you know, Mr. Moore's done a great job talking about the benefits to his organization, and I looked over this, I just could not come up with it. So can you boil down that whole tax thing to tell me how the taxpayers benefit from this?
Well, one, this amendment would provide a clarification that was not there relative to that second stream of money that was really not clearly identified, and also then provides a mechanism for them reporting those expenditures and providing us an ability to audit it. I don't know, I'm not sure if in that motion, it's the current audit provision or whether or not would be revised from where it is. But obviously, to have a provision is advantageous when it was not currently there. The second item relating to the, you know, it clarifies, from my perspective, would clarify, rather than getting into a dispute as to what we ought to do, and actually, it wouldn't be a dispute, as Mr. Moore indicated, it's really an equity and fairness issue that they were raising. So I would have to defer back to the board on that one, because ultimately, that's a policy decision, as you indicated, for the board to make.
So, Mr. Abate, my understanding from what Mr. Moore said was that his interpretation of the previous contract, right off the bat, he was very forthright, was similar to ours. So I understand the clarification, but it sounds like they're already on the same page as us. So, you know, I'm just trying to understand the financial, just with your tax explanation. I'm sorry, I don't understand tax policy enough, as I probably should. What's the benefit of that, pushing it back instead of receiving those funds upfront?
Well, the benefit would be they've waived for 2019, no matter what they do in the rooms for that 12-month period, they waived us providing any reimbursement. That does not currently exist in the agreement as it is today.
You know, I've got to go back to this, because I watched it when y'all were working through this process, and it came back, the Washington Nationals were leaving, and we're getting stuck with this big, huge stadium that cost a fortune to run, and none of the pro teams were coming here, we still hadn't fully recovered. And then you guys were able to talk a girls' fast-pitch softball pro team to come, and I didn't know how that was going to work, but I knew they were doing so well in the Disney area, and all these teams were coming in. I got excited, because I remember watching all the kids travel around, play ball. So that whole process just fascinated me. And I know it was a $12 million investment, but it's into our own asset. So, you know, if you guys took off and left, we made the $10 million, and you spent another $20 million in it, so by math, you know, we came out a little bit ahead. So I just wanted to drop that into there, because if we didn't get another pro team, we would have lost some of those tourist tax dollars, wouldn't we? We would have just gone away, because you had to have a pro team to get them. So we would have lost the ability to collect them. So that money came from having a pro stadium, which solved our problem of a pro stadium, and then Eureka, we got a great pro team coming in that's actually generating some revenues. So it's really good. So in a way, USSA, and Commissioner Isnardi, I agree, maybe we should have brought this back in June or July, when we realized that we probably needed to make a little switch. But, I mean, we've actually got a good pro team coming in that's bringing family tourism, and I think they're just doing such an incredible job, and I thank you for coming and doing what you're doing, and I hope you just grow exponentially, because even the lagoon taxes, we collected so much more than we were expecting to collect because of the tourism generated in the Vieira area. And I almost wish you were in District 1, it would have been so much fun to watch the games, a lot easier to get there. But I wanted to say that. But Commissioner Smith, sir, you are on still.
You just said everything I was going to say. Not everything, but you touched an awful lot of it, and it's true. The question is, what do the taxpayers benefit? The taxpayers benefit from a tremendous asset, instead of having a white elephant. And I can tell you, when I first sat on this board, that was a big fear that we had, because we had this big stadium out there, and we had one commissioner that kept saying, "Well, if we would just sell it for $18 million, we would have money for roads." There was nobody standing in line to buy that stadium, and if the stadium was to sell, it wasn't worth much more than scrap metal, which might have been a couple hundred thousand dollars. Instead, we had a first-class organization step up, said they were interested, they wanted to come here, they received the benefit, I didn't know it was 12 million, I know that they received the benefit of $10 million. Whoever the tenant was, they would have gotten that $10 million. But I can tell you with absolute certainty, had that tenant been the Nationals or the Marlins, they weren't going to spend another $20 million of their own money to further improve that area. That's what USSA did. They spent that $20 million. How do we benefit? Well, all the businesses benefit, because these families, they spend money here. They go to dinner, they go touristing, they do lots and lots of things. All of the things that they do generate tax money, sales tax. A chunk of that goes to the lagoon. That's another big asset. So they're just, they were a godsend. They really were. And they're terrific to work with. They stepped up, and they volunteered, if they get an overage, that they're not going to require or request the money that would be due them under this contract. That's an asset, because not everybody's that generous that does business in this county. They're stepping up. And I want to point out, when I first took office, we were dealing with a situation at Cocoa Expo. This is exact opposite. There was a gentleman there that ran that business, he started doing business without a CO. We can't punish these guys for waiting to do business when they got a CO. That was a nightmare, Cocoa Expo. We dealt with that for months and months, and I don't know, probably the first year and a half I was on the board. And I'm not sure that everybody's still satisfied with that. So there's a real big contrast in two very similar operations. So again, we have a question called, and I think this is a great opportunity to benefit the community and benefit a real partner in the community in this business, USSA.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes 3-2 with Commissioners Isnardi and Tobias and Tobias. To buy in objections. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay. And our pro team out there just won the Nationals, too. Pretty exciting, the pride. I'll give them a shout-out. We are moving into board reports. Commissioner Tobias, you were correct, we're about two hours and a half. Mr. Abate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Barfield?
Well, I know it's hard to see me up here in this jacket, because I'm, yeah, I'm kind of camouflaged. But again, thank you for everything. Thank you, it's been an honor, and just keep it going.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it was fun voting with Commissioner Barfield on something.
Strongly.
I'll tell you what, I lost to Commissioner Barfield more than I ever won, and I was always happy losing, because though we may disagree, Commissioner Barfield was always up here on principle, and always did, or his staff, like mine, did his homework for him. And it was an absolute pleasure and an honor. And I'll tell you what, he never says this, so damn it, I'm going to say it. He's got a wonderful family, and he's up here donating his salary, this doesn't get said enough, dealing with the hateful emails, the phone calls, and most importantly, dealing with me, for the love of public service. And here's a gentleman that had eight years, he would have won, there's no question, he would have, I mean, he's wildly popular, trust me, I did the polling. And he voluntarily stepped down. There is not a better measure of a leader that goes up, does the service to, as best as he can to his constituents, and there couldn't have been someone better, let me preface that, and then voluntarily stepped down. That is a lesson that, you know, I might have wished I learned a little bit sooner in the legislature, but I had a number of years of service before I got up here, and I've learned more on the two years sitting to his left than I certainly did in the eight years up serving in the legislature. So while I may not have you to my right, you have my cellphone number, and I certainly expect to get complained at and yelled at on a, I don't think that he'll have any problem doing that now that sunshine is over. So I just want to thank whoever put me over here next to Commissioner Barfield, and when you saw us go toe-to-toe on stuff, and I always, you know, was on the short end of the stick, I mean, he was the first one over to nudge me that, you know, he won, and I greatly appreciate that. We walk out of here better friends than what we did start, and I am so fortunate to have served with Commissioner Barfield, and I hope that his service doesn't end as he continues.
Well, that sure was syrupy. Boy, I couldn't put into words all the things that I think about Commissioner Barfield. I met him for the first time after, or was it before the primary, that we had breakfast or lunch together. I've come to love the guy like a brother, and he's been a, obviously, everybody can see that he's been a real upstanding and terrific commissioner to work with, and to represent his district and represent the people in the county. And Mr. Tobias is correct, he has a terrific family, and Darlene's here, and we know who really wears the pants in the family.
Amen.
So it's been my privilege to work with him for the last four years, and obviously, I'm going to miss him, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See, it's the downfall of going last, everything's been said. I can't say enough about Commissioner Barfield. He was one of the first people that reached out to me when I was running, and just meeting him, you immediately just feel like, okay, this guy's a nice guy. I mean, just immediately. To see him walk into this room to attend a meeting, he says hello to everybody, you know, they laugh, like Tobias, Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Barfield can go at it up here, and then you look over there, and they're laughing, and, oh, you know, they're probably not talking about anything in particular, other than to give each other a hard time for how they voted. So I know he's got still just a good spirit, and again, it's hard to put into words, I love his wife. I mean, she is a fellow nurse practitioner, so of course, there is a sisterhood there that goes unspoken. And I think Mr. Barfield is a fine human being, and I am honored to know him, and I'll probably still bounce things off of him, because we won't stop fighting for Merritt Island. I mean, I truly believe, we may not always agree with what happens there, or, but I promise you this, I promise to commit to help fight for that area, because I know it may not be my district, and I will never be a district-only commissioner, and I will always, I will always try to do what I think is best up there. And I think the new commissioner coming in has that on his mind as well, and that's the impression I got from him when I met him before he was elected. So I wish you well, I hope you will stay in touch, and it's been a pleasure and an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to miss you. We've got a good flow going up here, I kind of know how to talk each one of you into things at certain times, and you're pretty easy. I watched you guys for years before I got on here, and I actually got to know you and Kurt that way. And you are a very honest man, a good man, a good Christian man, and I really appreciate that, as well as everybody up here. You kind of get attached to the people you're up here serving with, and you know what, we can fuss at each other, but if anybody fusses us outside, you know, it's like they need to quit talking about the commission. But you've been just a great commissioner, and you've just been a real pleasure to serve with, and I'm really going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on that, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
But I'm not going to miss that jacket. You can't even see it.
We can't see that jacket.
I like that jacket.